About the.
Um, and then.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome. Uh, to call this meeting the Lebanon County Board of Commissioners to order. We will begin our agenda with observing a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Do you want me to pledge the flag?
I. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And.
Thank you. Um, for public comment. Having this morning?
I do. Do we have new microphones? Do we have a new sound system?
Well, where have you been?
Is that? Okay. Got it in two months.
Hey, can't get away with anything now.
Is that it?
Oh, that was the. I just was like, wait a minute. Okay, sorry.
Okay, uh, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes, uh, from our meeting from August seventh, which is in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, three minutes, all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
But I need a motion to add something to the agenda.
Try.
Okay, a brief discussion on the D E S. Um, we had. I have some information I'd like to just run through, see if I have it right, and, uh, about the joiner, proposed joiner.
We, uh, uh, what you wanna, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. Uh, use your second, uh, the second.
Thank you.
Motion to second, questions, comments. If not, all in favor, please say aye. Same sign. We'll do that before, at the beginning of your report, Jamie. Okay.
George, where are you on?
All right, this is new.
Yes, good morning. We had receipts on August eighteenth, or August nineteenth and twentieth of thirty-one thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. That brought us to a total cash of one million nine hundred ninety thousand two hundred two dollars and fifty-seven cents. And I have no expenditures to take off. Payroll will come off later today or tomorrow. And the tax claim on distributed right now is a hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Leaving a balance of a million eight hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred and two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Like I said, payroll has to come off, and I still need some numbers to complete that amount that comes off, so.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Thank you. Uh, second.
Motion to second, questions or comments? None, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. For this proof, thank you. Al, good morning.
Good morning.
Please introduce yourself and proceed.
Shaw's Navy Director of Human Resources. Under Personnel Transactions, Toldonda Matthews, caseworker one, children and youth rescind offer of employment, August eighteenth. Sorry, these are resignations and terminations. Brian Coomer, Court Officer, Courts, resignation effective August eighteenth. Henry Spidler, Casual Operations Technician, Department of Emergency Services, termination effective August sixth. Gage Hess, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, resignation effective August twelfth. Christopher Miller, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, termination effective August eighteenth. Jessica Piles, Collections, Clerk, Information Services, resignation effective August twenty-second. And Jessica Marks, Court Typist A, Sheriff's Office, termination effective August sixth.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to second, questions, comments, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Approved.
Under Changes to Status, Transfers and Promotions, Franklin Gallegos. Change of status from substitute meal transporter to part-time meal transporter and area agency on aging, no change in his rate effective September first. Stanley Smith, Jr., promotion from Full-Time Correctional Officer slash Lance Corporal at the Jail to Corporal at the Jail. At the rate of thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents per hour effective August seventeenth.
I'm moving those transactions.
Second.
Motion to second, questions, comments? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Approved.
Under other transactions, Department of Emergency Services would like to hire Dawn Zetorski as a casual part-time operations technician at the rate of thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents per hour effective August twenty-fifth. President Judge Towak would like to hire Catherine Seen as an admin assistant to and domestic relations at the rate of one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents by weekly effective August twenty-fifth. Information Technology Services would like to hire Kamal Datal as a network technician at the rate of two thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents by weekly effective August twenty-fifth. Empathonitary Clerk of Courts would like to rehire Sherry Bany as a casual and part-time court clerk at the rate of fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents per hour effective August twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Second, questions, comments, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, and then those transactions are approved.
Moving on to Salary Board, if there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt those transactions under the Salary Board?
Second.
Motion to second, questions, comments, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Falcon. Mr. Ramsey, please introduce yourself for the record. Please proceed.
Michael Anderson, and the Director of Domestic Relations. Um, good morning. I am here today to seek your approval for the, um, Cooperative Agreement. That Cooperative Agreement is, uh, agreement, uh, part of the Title IV D Social Security Act. It's an agreement between the Department of Human Services, so the Commonwealth, um, and the county, um, to make sure that we are doing what we need to do in our department as far as, um, with child support, spouse support, fraternity, um, locate services. Um, this agreement would run for five years, um, so from October first, twenty twenty-five to September thirtieth, twenty thirty. Um, in this agreement, there are no major changes from the previous agreement, um, which is good. Um, there are a few minor changes. I did give you a list of those ahead of time. I believe, um, C cap also had, um, given you guys some information on that as well. Um, there probably will be some changes coming for the next Cooperative Agreement, and we'll talk about that at budget. So, um, and I just seek your approval for, um, approval of this agreement. Um, as well as the President Judge, who I have heard believe also talked about this.
I make a motion to approve Michael's request.
I'll second the motion to approve the four D Cooperative Agreement by new contract.
Motion to second, questions, comments? Interesting. Yes. As opportunity to review. Any other questions or comments? Here you go, in favor, uh, approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, and get that approved.
Awesome. If you don't mind, uh, real quick, I just wanted to remind the Commissioners about our Child Support Awareness Event tomorrow, which will run from eleven to two, um, outside. So it's the part, um, of the, um, municipal building. Uh, we're pretty excited. We have, uh, twenty-two backpacks fully, um, with all supplies that we're going to be giving away at that event tomorrow. Um, and then we have a bunch of, uh, games, prizes, food. Um, and then we also have put together a bunch of materials for what we do in child support. In case anybody has any questions, we'll have people available to be able to answer any of that. So just wanted to put that little plug again. I did talk about that at the last Insurance Meeting. Uh, part of our child support awareness event in our outreach to the, to the community.
You should have a nice day.
Yeah, we're, we're very hopeful.
You started by saying, if you don't mind, what if we mind? We already did it.
Very true. Why couldn't you interrupt me? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's, I, that's a great event.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Hey. There it is. Before, before you get into your items, Commissioner Woods asked, uh, just for your information, I just spoke to Bob Dow because I knew this was probably, and before we have a, a contract in front of us, an agreement to consider, I asked, actually asked Bob and suggested, he talked to Jamie about setting up a workshop so we could discuss it. So I'd rather, let's wait until he's here, that can answer any questions about the possibility.
You already approved to put it on.
Yeah, like I said, if you have something to discuss, but I'd rather wait and do that discussion in the workshop with Bob here.
I understand what you're saying, uh, but I would like to just go over what I have. It's two minutes.
Ask a question or whatever you have, yeah.
Two minutes, okay. Um, I did talk to Bob Dow concerning, uh, his proposal for a joiner with Lancaster County. And I had some questions, and I said, well, I have to seek some feedback from some of my colleagues that have done this to find out what, uh, what they liked about it and what they would do different. And so I'm trying to summarize what I have, so if you don't answer, that's fine, but I'll, I'll run through it. Under Public Safety as our number one priority, we are already called to assist with other counties' teams, uh, for hazmat. And that's means sometimes they're unable to respond. That can happen when a county driver is on vacation or sick. But no driver's license is needed, uh, to drive the big truck for hazmat station fifty. But you do need the written approval of the hazmat, uh, officer in our charge. So for insurance purposes, that has to be enforced. And the other counties had hazmat engine is in for repairs, meaning we would always have one. We wouldn't be without an engine. Uh, number two, hazmat responders are encouraged from all counties in the joiner. And that means Lancaster has some people that wants to come and work with us. And some counties, according to Bob, are having trouble recruiting hazmat team members. After a joiner, some counties sell their equipment and others trade it in on upgrades. Number four, they may sell their equipment and use the funds elsewhere. Or number five, if not sold, the county in charge may use county, another county substation to stage some of their equipment in that county. Number six, remember that hazmat contains spills with pigs and that sort of thing. They do not clean up the spills. He says a contractor, it comes in to do that. Number seven, fire engine tires are usually replaced every seven to ten years. So my question about how often they have to replace, be replaced is not too often because the tread, uh, doesn't really wear off. And if they have one stationed in Lancaster as well, uh, there won't be a lot of extra travel with our, our vehicles. And when they are replaced, it's usually because they dry rot. Some of the things that, um, I think are listed as cautions or keep your eye out on. Our liability getting drawn into a lawsuit with the county that is not part of the C cap insurance pool. Uh, Jamie may have even said that, I'm not sure. Number two, contractors may arrive many hours after a spill to clean it up, and the closer a hazmat team is to an event, the faster they can respond to contain it. Number three, because cleanup contractors usually have to travel from afar distance, and some contractors come from out of state. There may be a significant delay for people to return to their homes after an evacuation, and hazmat, hazmat may get blamed. In case of an accident, number four, or an incident, rather, in another county, always stage some members in the home county while some members are dispatched to respond in another county. Number five, dedicate a team member to handle billing and collections from insurance companies or self-insured businesses that caused the spill. It can take years to collect. Traffic backups on interstates, behind wrecks, in towns or near tourist attractions during festivals and concerts or other popular events can cause long responses away from home and can interfere with family life. Number seven, to be sure it's not a shell game, quantify the savings. And so I'm sure there's others, but that's as far as I got, and, um, because I did ask some of my colleagues about their joiners. Bob verbally told me about the ones around us, and then I also found out about the one to the east of us and this one out west. Now, the only one is Clarion. Some of the Commissioners said Clarion is in the joiner, and some said Clarion is not in the joiner. So if you want to discuss it further with Bob or whatever.
Oh, no, we will in a, uh,
Yeah. Would you like?
Workshop.
Would you each like, uh, I mean, I guess there's, maybe I miscounted. I'm gonna have to make another one if you're interested, but I just thought I would share that. Uh, put a lot of work into trying to understand it to make sure, um, and I have to go back and talk with Bob a second time. But that's the information I collected, and I just wanted to share it.
Again, it'll be in your future, and, and again, we don't even know at this point whether Bob's gonna bring a formal agreement to us for consideration. That's been the discussion about the possibility.
Yeah.
So I said, it'd be a good idea to have a workshop, discuss it to the public, the concept, you know, and, and how it would work, and, and so that anyone can express any questions or concerns. I'm sure that he's considered most, if not all of that, that you, you laid out there. But we can ask him, and then it'd be nice for him to share that, uh, response with everybody, so. We're looking forward to having that discussion.
Yeah, we're planning towards next, next Wednesday.
Oh, next Wednesday. Okay, that's great.
He spoke to me after he spoke with you, so.
Is, is a joiner just like a mutual aid agreement? Is that? Sounds like that's what it is.
We already have a mutual aid agreement.
That's, that has existed for decades.
Right.
Mutual aid, yeah, yeah.
I don't think Lancaster wants to manage their hazmat anymore.
Okay.
So joiner, um, I, I don't know the term joiner, what it means legally, et cetera, but this would be contractual.
Okay.
Conception, if you think about it, you know, you look at the pressure on all emergency responders, police, fire, you know, ambulance, you're seeing mergers of, you know, creating more regional. That's the, the, the concept here. Is there a way to do this more efficiently if we combine resources? Certainly all kinds of details to be worked out. Uh, we don't have an agreement to look at yet, but I'm gonna look at the concept. So again, we'll get into that in more detail on the workshop. Anything else?
No, no, I just wanted to read what, um, where I was because it was a lot to absorb, and I tried to simplify it with pictures.
Jamie, you want to proceed?
Sure. Um, first item I have to present is an engineering agreement with Wilson Consulting Group. Uh, this is an engineering agreement separate from the, uh, contracts we already have with them for routine inspections of bridges, both municipal and county and, and et cetera, other, all the other work they do. This is separate for a specific bridge. This is County Bridge. Uh, C O thirty-six, it is Jonestown Road over Swetara Creek. This is more commonly known as the bridge, uh, at the west end of Jonestown on Main Street, uh, that goes over the Swetara. It's a county-owned bridge. Uh, last year, Penn Dot identified that as, as needing, uh, rehabilitation primarily of the overhanging sidewalk on the, on the, uh, north side of the bridge, and they pretty much gave us, I think, two years to get this accomplished. So, um, Wilson has been studying this. We've had a couple of site meetings. We've already gone and removed some of the brush and, and things that are close to the bridge in anticipation of doing work to the bridge. This next step is, uh, for Wilson Consulting to do a technical and price proposal. Or this is a technical and price proposal for the preliminary engineering required for the proposed rehabilitation of the bridge. So this is for them basically to put together the plan on how extensive the work would be, what the estimates would be, and how they would do it engineering, from an engineering perspective. So there are a couple of different ways so far that they are looking at doing this. Um, and the first step again is to engage them to, to do the engineering on. The, um, the total amount for this agreement would be eighty-three thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents. The funding for this would come from Act thirteen, uh, transportation funds that we have from the Marcello Shale, same funds we used for the, um, Distillery Road over Hammer Creek Bridge that was, that was replaced, uh, earlier this year. So, um, asking for your approval on this agreement with Wilson to do the preliminary engineering on the rehabilitation of the Jonestown Bridge.
Also moved.
Second.
For the second, that's who is.
I'll move.
Could you just repeat the full amount again? Eighty-three thousand eight hundred?
Yeah, it's a, I think it's in your packet also, if you need to refer back, but it's eighty-three, eight twenty-one, forty-five.
Thank you.
Um, this will, by the way, just a comment before you vote, this will involve a, a closure to some extent, possibly total closure. Best case, maybe a one lane, but we won't know any of that. But I know the people of Jonestown have had a number, had their, more than their share of closures over the years, you know, with the, to the, to the south and detours and so on. This will be another one. Guess if you look at it from a high altitude, pretty much everything going in and out of Jonestown should be in pretty good shape after, after this. So, um, anyway, I don't have a timeline for it, presumably at the earliest, uh, maybe mid-next year, if not maybe the year after. We have two years to do it.
Talking to the engineer?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Approved.
Okay. We have a resignation from the Children and Youth Advisory Board from Lou's Rosario. Um, Lou's, uh, as you all know, is our law librarian upstairs and is retiring, and so at the same time, she's resigning from the Children and Youth Advisory Board. Ask for your acceptance of that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, questions or comments? Just thank Lou's for her service. And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
I have a nomination in front, before you, from the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation for an appointment of Franklin Foose in the business sector as a member, uh, representing the business sector as a member of the South Central Workforce Development Board. Uh, there is a vacancy on that regional board. That board serves Adams, Cumberland, Dauphin, Franklin, Juniad, Lebanon, Perry, and North Counties. There's a vacancy from Lebanon County. Um, they have been asking us to, uh, to forward a name, and so we have a nomination of Franklin Foose. Um, he is the site and head, site head and capabilities leader at Bayer Consumer Health with twelve years' experience leading manufacturing. So seeking your approval on that.
I'll move your witness to.
Second.
In the second, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. This one approved.
Thank you. Okay, I have, uh, next disabled veterans. Examples from real estate list, those meeting the criteria for the program are Michael Miller of Shali Avenue, Lebanon, Lori Miller of Distillery Road, Newmanstown, Sally Kidmore in Woodland Estates, Lebanon, Andrew Batson, Lancaster Street Anvil, Peter McDaniel, Darlene Avenue, Palmar, Jeanette Mays of Fourth Avenue, Lebanon, Tyler Mann, Swong Lane, Jonestown, Grace Phillips, Richard Drive, Lebanon, Janet Hay, Kircher Avenue, Lebanon, Gilbert Rojas, Palm Lane, Lebanon.
Make a motion to approve the ten, the real estate exemption requests that were presented.
In the second, questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Next.
Okay, uh, next I have two applications for, uh, hotel tax grant funds. The first one being from the Pennsylvania Gourd Society, where they're Pennsylvania Gourd Art Show and Festival at the Lebanon Valley Expo Center. They are requesting a five-thousand-dollar grant. Uh, they list a narrative on their, uh, on the second page of their application, and the total project cost is twenty, is two thousand twenty, for twenty, two thousand twenty-six is eighty-six hundred dollars. They would use funds for admission fees, class registrations, vendor fees, et cetera, to cover more than twenty-five percent of that cost.
I would point out that it's more than twenty-five percent, and, uh, maybe two thousand dollars would be more appropriate. Think that would be close to twenty-five percent, but I think they know the rules in asking for more than the twenty-five percent. When we have so many coming in, I, I don't think it's right. So I would make a motion for a two-thousand-dollar match that we would give them.
Second.
Uh, just just want to be sure that they are exceeding the twenty-five percent. And then we, you're, you're.
Eight thousand six hundred is the total, so a quarter of that would be roughly two thousand. I didn't go into the six hundred, but I think two thousand is a reasonable.
But they're asking for five thousand.
But that's more than twenty-five percent.
That's really, it is required to have a twenty-five percent match. Which they would have.
I thought they could ask us for twenty-five percent.
Wow. And they have that backwards.
I think you're right now that I think about it, but I, I prefer to give them twenty-five percent.
So they do have twenty-five percent match, the five thousand is the, is the, the maximum amount that you allow here.
Yeah, but I, I think what, two thousand would be.
We have a second for that motion, right? Without hearing it.
Which, oh, you're, okay, you're on that.
Which motion are you? I'm sorry.
Your, your motion, two thousand. I have a second for that. Additional motions regarding the request.
Some of those that we funded at, uh, five thousand dollars, having that the twenty-five percent match or exceeding.
Second.
I don't care to second it for five thousand.
I will second that and comment that I've been at this, uh, event the last two years. As a matter of fact, the first year I was Commissioner, I was scratching my head, wondering who goes to a Gourd Society Festival, and it was, uh, well-attended. Uh, the cars, that parking lot, the license plates from multiple states, and as far as the, well, Louisiana, so I think the very best for what we have this, it's all about. So I will second the motion. Does any other discussion?
I would add that, that wreath is an item that they produced and dropped it on, uh, in appreciation. They do some pretty incredible stuff of gourds. Amazing, they do the gourds.
And any other questions, comments? You don't all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. Approved.
Okay, the, the second I have is for the, um, from the Elmer C. Evelyn Memorial Charity, Inc. in Myers Town for the project for the Myers Town Carnival twenty-twenty-six, which would be a five-day-long carnival in Myers Town Borough, and they attached some narrative. With it, uh, they are requesting a five-thousand-dollar grant with a total project cost of thirty thousand dollars. This is a twenty-twenty-six event.
Person moved.
Second.
Motion to second, questions, comments? None, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. At approval.
I have.
I apologize, uh, that I cut you off in your public comment. I assumed you wanted to introduce Gavin, and I, you know, you talked about the P A system, so.
Sorry.
I never got to that, if that's what your intention was.
Oh, no, well, I just. But I do have a question, just, it's just a, a question on, um, the veterans', uh, exemptions. Do we keep a, a running total of like how much the, the county has exempted over the course of time?
Assessment.
Yeah, assessment's good. I don't have it, but, uh, they, they could calculate it. It's in when it's a running total, I mean, so, you know, as people pass and away, they, they're no longer eligible, obviously, the property, certainly individual, not property.
Right.
So I don't know running total, we, we potentially, uh, do a summary or a total, some total of the, of what's been granted over the last several years, but on a rolling basis, I don't know.
I just wondered, how does that, does it have any kind of an impact when you do the county budget? I mean, having these deductions, is it big enough that it makes a difference?
It's bigger to the school district, obviously, but for us, it's every, every dollar that we waive, uh, taxes on, this is, uh, we have to make it up somewhere.
We're, we're, uh, we've not quantified it at budget time. It, it is part of a, you know, we get a whole number of, of tax of assessed values that translate into county taxes as a revenue line item. And, you know, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of, it's close to fifty million now. So if, um, it, it fluctuates, it can fluctuate based on assessment appeals, it can fluctuate based on this, or you know, nonprofit exemptions, that type of thing, so, um, I, it's not something that I could say, well, in twenty-twenty-six, there were X number, it was reduced by X, because at the same time, there are increases from building and so on. There's so many things that go into that number that cause it to fluctuate, that it's, it's not one thing that we've looked at to quantify. But there'd be a way to quantify things if you wanted, that we could see in twenty-twenty-five, there were this, you know, it was this value.
I just meant, you know, every, it seems like almost every meeting, there's one or two. Today I was struck, I think there were like four or five people.
That's unusual.
Yeah, it's a larger number than normal, ten?
And, and the, um, it is expanding. Um, there is, there's state legisl- Um, there is, there's state legislation that's, that's expanding it. It's in some cases allowing it for being, to look back and, and retroactively, they can retroactively apply. Um, it's, it's constantly expanding, so it is more than we've seen in the past.
There was a financial
That's all right. I just wanted to say that in the past, most people only knew of Scott Core preparing these here in the county building, but also the VA Hospital and Fort Indian Town Gap are processing them too, so we have more active and visible, um, I don't know what to call them, but processors of the veterans' requests.
There, there used to be, and maybe there still is some, an income, uh, guideline as well. If you, or still had the income after uh, you were 100% disabled, you, you still would not qualify in the past, and maybe I think they loosened that up as well.
That's correct.
And, and did, did I hear you correct? Does it, do they also get exemption from the school tax?
Yes, it's exemption from property, real, real estate tax.
Oh, I thought it was just county taxes.
It's a big deal.
So it's school, it's school
relationships to one of the
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
We have the, uh, Steve books.
Okay, next, ready for our
Really? What did you do with that?
Yeah, earlier you said yeah, I said Tom was direct.
Where you go, where you find, you know. Sometimes.
Yeah, they think check along, he said, we need that more, you can stand now. They changed up the, uh,
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. Good morning.
Second. So who's, who's gonna lead off here, uh, introduce your
I can start if that's all right. Um, so I just, uh, for introductions, uh, Mike Bettistelli is walking around, him out the packs there. Um, with Stiefel, Brett Holland with Stiefel, Sonia Gross with Stiefel as well. And then Chad Morganlander. Chad, it's been a few years since he's been here. Um, Kevin, a lot of times Kevin Karan will come in. And, um, we have Chad today. Chad's a co-chief investment officer and senior portfolio manager with Washington Crossing. He and Kevin worked together for how many years?
Oh, gosh, nearly 30, if not, maybe 32.
Long time.
Married a couple.
So, um, but, uh, we're fortunate to have Chad with us today to kind of give us an update on part of the portfolio. So if I could ask you if you turn to page four of 11 in your booklet there. Um, this is the same quarterly report that we go over, um, every three months. And, uh, I'm gonna refer you to the, um, uh, top left, uh, corner of the page there where it refers to the period that we're looking at here is, um, uh, April 1st or, uh, ending March 31st, but April 1st through June 30th is what it is for the period that this booklet is referencing. Um, Sonia is gonna have some updated numbers for kind of after that for a year-to-date number, but we'll go over this for now. So the first column there in the top left there at the top, uh, where it says total portfolio for current period, again, for the second quarter of the year, um, the, uh, balance in the portfolio started off at 135,000,365,615 is where we started off at. And then you see the net cash flow of a, of a deposit of 141,287. There were distributions for retirees, as you guys, uh, for pensioners, uh, as they collect their funds. But, um, the, the board also put in the, it's not called an ARC payment anymore, I believe.
APC, annual
Annual Determined Contribution of 2.8 million that the board contributed on behalf of the pension. So that number is not a negative. It shows the positive between deposits and withdrawals. It, it was a, a net deposit of 141,000. Uh, the total return during that period was, uh, 6,465,664 uh, for an ending balance of, uh, 141,972,566 at the end of that period. Uh, year-to-date number, you can kind of look, I should say, excuse me, that current period at the bottom of that, for the, for the second quarter of the year. Um, there was a 4.82% return during that period. The second column to the right of that where it says year-to-date, um, at the bottom, there is a return of 4.29% um, for a year-to-date number, and then the third column over there is just a one-year period. And it has a return there of one, uh, excuse me, of 9.7% return, uh, during the last 12 months. Any questions with any of that at all? All right, and then, uh, moving around to the right-hand side, kind of down towards the bottom, is just the allocation right now. Um, it says cash and equivalents there, it shows 0%. Actually, there's a, just shy of 3% that's in T-bills, which isn't actually cash, it's, uh, earning interest, uh, for the, uh, uh, for the pension account, but that's essentially considered almost like a cash balance, but it's showing 0% right now, but uh, again, about 3% in T-bills or treasury bills. And then moving clockwise around there, um, there's 65% in equities or stock. Uh, fixed income is 29%, and then what's considered alternative investments, which is that REIT portfolio is, uh, 5% is what that is. Um, over to the left, I'll just reference that over to the left, uh, Washington Crossing, which is what Chad is here to speak about today. They represent about 12.67. They're the fourth manager down there, uh, little, just shy of 18 million dollars that they represent for, uh, for the county.
So since the T-bills are listed on the investment exposure, as you, as you said, three, it's 2.8% or, that, I guess that would then be in the blue. Would that be in the blue?
It would actually, technically be in that cash and 0% cash equivalents. Uh, it would, oh, you mean right now where it's shown at? It would be, it would be in the green, I'm sorry.
Oh, in the green.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's technically fixed.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay.
Any other questions with that at all? I could ask you to turn to page six. As well. Page six, this is a lot of numbers on the page, um, but if you kind of go over to the right, uh, over towards the top of the page, there it has a one, three, five, and 10-year period. And if you draw up to the very bottom line where the, the totals are, so underneath that one-year uh, column to the very bottom, it shows that, again, that 9.7% return over the last 12 months, and again, that's through June. Uh, the three-year period is 10.29%, and that's an average, uh, that's what that is, a three-year average. Five-year average is 1.28%. And then the 10-year average is the 6.88% that is there. Sonia is gonna give kind of updated numbers, and I failed to mention, we just wanted to recognize Sally and, and her, uh, uh, support with us over the years, of 21 years of serving the county, and it's been a pleasure working with you. And, um, leave September might be, I think, are technically slowing down, so we just wanted to say thank you for, it's been a pleasure working with you too.
Thank you.
The current balance of the pension plan as of August 20th is 143,238,201. And our, in review of our asset allocation, uh, similar to what it was at the end of second quarter, so still within the investment policy statement as Brett just reviewed. Year-to-date performance, uh, Brett just shared what that was as of June, but year-to-date now through August 20th, 6.2%. And that is the unaudited year-to-date performance. With this year's market performance and high valuations, we would like to raise around $3 million in cash. And we'd like to add that to the laddered T-bills. Um, with a return, an annualized return of about 4%. And again, adding that to our current ladder of T-bills.
That, that T-bill portion, that cash portion we're referring to, that's used for our payments, uh, each month, is what that's used for, so.
Any questions on Brett?
Could you, uh, repeat the final number again?
Yes, the current pension plan balance, 143,238,201.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions with any of that at all? But with that, again, I mentioned we're, um, fortunate to have Chad with us today, and Chad's gonna give an update on the piece that they uh, manage on behalf of the pensions, so thanks for coming.
Well, thank you, and, and first, uh, out of the box, I want to thank you to every one of you, and we're so grateful that you allow us to manage your money, uh, for so many years. Uh, just as a brief recap of what we do and how we do it, Washington Crossing Advisors Victory Portfolio is an all-cap, lower volatility portfolio. That's the objective, to get a fair quality return with, without taking a great amount of risk. And our benchmark, when you're looking at risk, is comparing it to either the value index or the S and P 500. Uh, so we are looking very carefully at not only total return, but also what type of risk one would take for per unit of allocating dollars. It's a sensible way of investing. It's a way that we believe, uh, is, uh, a more conservative way. And how we do that is we are, are what we call quality. We're a quality manager, and everyone says quality, so everyone has their own different definition of quality. And I like to tell you our definition. It's very, very straightforward. Now, we like companies that don't have a lot of debt because we believe companies that have a tremendous amount of debt creates a tremendous amount of fragility. And typically, companies that have a lot of debt, in times of economic uncertainty, there's a much more volatility and instability to that equity price. Uh, two, we like companies that are very steady-y in their earnings and predictability. Meaning that the companies, oh, year over year, uh, the volatility of their earnings stream is less say cyclical. We're looking for companies that are growing and profitable and have more of a steady ride when it comes to their earnings as well as their, 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 their revenue. And then lastly, over a longer period of time, we're looking for companies that have more productive assets. That's really a simple ways of saying, we want companies that are organically growing by reinvesting back into their business. Good old-fashioned way of growing a, a business, similar to how we would grow here in this town. Uh, so growing profitable, well-capitalized, uh, what we do is we do have that investment process that Kevin may have mentioned many times here before, which is we take the largest companies, the 1,000 largest companies. We grade them based off of those three parameters, coming up with our universe of 200 names. And then from there, we actually get into the fun of it, which is to actually value them similar to how you and I would value a company that we were going to take over here, uh, including debt and as well what the predictability of that cash flow is. Coming up with a stock price target, that's the mandate, five years out. We want to be business owners. So what you'll notice within this strategy is that you may have companies within the portfolio like Microsoft or Oracle that you've owned for many years. And that's perfectly fine for us, because we want to be business owners in a very deliberate manner of buying those high-quality names. If we cannot find things to buy within the 200 names that we're looking at, we would prefer to go to cash. And that is a very different type of investment strategy or thought pattern than most managers. Because their mandate is to stay fully invested. Our mandate is to try to get you a fair risk-adjusted return. Looking at return, but also looking at risk. So we not, we prefer not to do something foolish with your money, but rather to put it on the side and earn perhaps what's happening within the short-term money market perspective. Uh, this, it has been a portfolio that we've been managing for well over 15 years. Uh, we're, um, we are proud about the return that we've achieved. But also, we are proud about the way that we've not over-promised what we can deliver. Now, I'm gonna kind of transition here to today's market environment. Because although the portfolio has done wonderful this year, uh, this is a very interesting time that we live in. First of all, I'd like to tell you, uh, that by doing our work, nearly 50% of the S and P 500, nearly 50% of the S and P 500, it consists of 20 stocks. Leaving about 480 to 470 stocks that have basically been day in and day out doing what they've been doing, but they're, they have not participated in the equity market as those 20 companies have. So the S and P 500, which is a market cap-weighted index, is actually a much more concentrated investment today than it has ever been. That elevates the volatility of that index because of the concentration risk. And it also, uh, is a more correlated trade to one thematic. And that thematic is very similar, and it rhymes with the dot-com era that we all lived through back in the 90s. Which is, there's an invention, a new investment spending cycle, which is very legitimate. By no measure am I gonna tell you that artificial intelligence here today isn't promising, it is. But similar to the dot-com era back in the 90s, how this will play out, we believe, is it's not going to be instantaneous benefit over the next two years. But yet, in the next 20 years, the transformation will be remarkable. I'm happy to say that within the, the Victory Strategy, we have many of those companies. But they are not on the bleeding edge of valuations and momentum. They're the lower volatility, lower momentum way of playing or investing within the AI build-out, within investing over the long run over the, uh, based off the US economy. And it's much more sturdier approach to building out a portfolio. So, uh, in short, when we look at the US economy to pivot there, we believe that there's been a deceleration of growth for 2025 based off of trade uncertainties, based off of perhaps some political headwind over the globe. But rather, this will eventually subside. That we could see over the next several years, a continuation of a tailwind of business investment, which will come from not only the build-out of artificial intelligence, but also the build-out of our infrastructure, which will bode well for the US economy. You also could add into that productivity, perhaps that comes into play because of these new technologies, uh, over the course of the next several years, to maybe bolster GDP growth over the next five years, seven years, 10 years. The market is, is responding to that excitement. Hence the reason why it's ginned up right now. But, you know, eventually what happens with these cycles is that you get into a kind of a bubble territory, uncertain pockets of the market that one has to be more mindful of, and you're starting to get to that euphoric kind of spot within the system where the growth rates of certain companies have to grow at an exponential rate for a period of time where the math just doesn't make sense. That doesn't mean that these companies aren't phenomenal. It doesn't mean that the internet, uh, the artificial intelligence or the build-out isn't going to continue. It's just valuations may not be lining up. I'll give you an example of that, so you can, you know, get an example from the late 90s. There was a company that was the largest company in the, in the United States, Surcast ExxonMobil. And they were involved in routers called Cisco Systems. Uh, it actually, uh, the stock price was, I, I think at one point it got as high as $400 billion, something along those lines. Never to reach that again after 2000, the 2000s. Uh, we now own Cisco Systems in the Victory Portfolio, but we didn't buy it when it was trading at but we didn't buy it when it was trading at fifty times multiple or forty times multiple. We decided to buy it at a twelve times multiple. And it gives a perfect example of how you could have a euphoric boom to bust. But really, the reality is that Cisco Systems has been growing. It's profitable, just not growing at the exponential rate of thirty percent year-over-year like the market was anticipating for thirty years. Just didn't happen. So this is kind of where we are within the US financial system for the time being. It is again, an exciting time. It is exciting because some inventions are now going to be perhaps brought forward that perhaps would happen fifty years from now, maybe happen ten or fifteen years from now. But again, we have to be somewhat more mindful about valuation. So I wanted to kind of, you know, stop there for a moment, see if anyone in the group has questions. I will just maybe add one one more thing. Tomorrow's gonna be an exciting day within the Federal Reserve and what's happening with monetary policy. Tomorrow's Jackson Hole. The Federal Reserve, as you can see, is well-reported, has been pressured to lower interest rates. At Jackson Hole, that's not the time to do it, but we believe that there is an elevated probability that when Jay Powell gets up to speak, he'll say that the jobs market is slowing down and that maybe he'll consider before the end of the year lowering his rates with his group of Fed governors. Maybe. If he doesn't, there may be some disturbances. The the market may have a little bit of a get a little upset, but by no measure should anyone be, you know, will not sleep at night because of it. This too shall pass, and eventually the Fed will start lowering interest rates next year.
Let's, let's ask that, what your prediction would be for that by the end of the year, but that is, there's so much pressure on housing and the rates that 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 relief would be welcome.
I agree. The the housing market, housing starts and prices are a little disjointed. And what really would be needed is the long end of the yield curve, the ten-year bond to come down. Unfortunately, the Federal Reserve really controls the short end, and the only way they really can control the long end is by going back into doing the quantitative easing that they used to do. So we'll have to see what happens. But like you, Stewie mentioned, it, housing across the United States, creation of housing has been in a doldrum. And, you know, that would be given much-needed boost to the economy if we can get that that ball rolling, yes, sir.
May I just ask, one, sure, this may not be answerable, but of the twenty stocks that represent fifty percent what what are the top seven? In the second quarter was very good, but yeah, in the second quarter, for example, what would the top seven, what do they call them, magnificent seven? What would they make up as far as the as far as the top twenty? The seven is really where it's heavily, more heavily weighted, right?
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's around thirty-five percent. I may be off by 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 a certain percentage, but no, you have the companies like like Nvidia, that's four trillion dollar, you know, market cap, followed by a Microsoft or an Apple, that are multi-trillion-dollar market caps, or Alphabet, or Facebook. And there are some real strong earnings. I'm not, believe you me, I'm not saying that many of those companies have been justifiably, the valuations have gone up because of that strong growth and tailwind. But there are certain pockets of companies that, trading at fifty times P multiples, that you need the growth rates to grow like this for next twenty years to kind of grow into the valuation.
Just to kind of give some perspective on that too, I don't want to misspeak here. Sure does. Better than I would chat, but ExxonMobil has about a five-hundred-billion-dollar market cap, I think. So I think anybody would agree and say ExxonMobil, big company, yeah, very large, like huge company. But if you think about it, it takes about eight ExxonMobil's to make up one Nvidia. So these tech companies are mammoth, right?
And there's, by the way, there's two different markets happening here. There's the S and P five hundred, which I failed to talk about, which has a market multiple of twenty-four. That got to around thirty-three or thirty before the dot-com implosion. And then there's the equally-weighted index. Those are the the market cap of where everything is equally-weighted. That multiple is much more attractive at a nineteen times multiple. And what I found is that as you see the market start to roll over, meaning the S and P, you actually see these other indexes rally. So S and P goes down, and these, many of these other indexes start to kind of find their sea legs and go higher places. The money's leaving these companies and going into the more consumer staple companies, industrial, industrials and whatnot. This isn't the worst, it's just where we are.
Okay. It's just interesting to me. I never heard the statement before about Exxon being exceeded by Cisco. And at one time in my life, I worked for Exxon, and my husband taught Cisco networking at the Carr and Tech Center, and I'm just like, what? So that was all going on while we were holding those positions, and I'd never heard of it before.
Yeah, Cisco was such an attractive company back in nineteen ninety-nine because it was powering the internet. It was the major driver of network computing. And so every company was airing out their old backend systems on telecommunications and putting the routers in and whatnot. And in fact, oddly enough, today, there is gonna be kind of a cyclical upturn for the demand for all of that equipment, not as robust, but a little, right? Which, you know, makes it a more attractive investment, which is reasoning for it being in our portfolio. Fairly conservative way of playing it. Hopefully, it works out. We have a five-year kind of perspective on everything.
I just, I just never heard that before, and it made me go, whoa. Yeah, we were fighting with each other, and we didn't know.
I I know, I've known for the whole time you've been manager for us that you've been, you resort to cash if nothing else.
Yeah.
What what percentage do you, is there a typical percentage that you have in cash, number one? Number two, I'm curious if you went, where you went when the tariffs came about? Did you go to more? Did you stand pat? And because the market seemed like it cared for about a month, and then it didn't seem to care anymore.
Good question. So we we saw opportunities that we were higher in our cash position, a little bit higher, maybe I think we were like eighteen percent. And I know that we bought two companies with that, with those funds. In the portfolio, we bought Casey's and Rollins within the strategy. We typically float around between five percent cash, and it could be up to twenty percent. Rarely do we get higher than that. I know during, before COVID, we were at twenty-eight percent and then in the depth, so that I think it got down to about seven percent or five percent. That's because we're just looking at return, and we're not getting paid well for taking on the risk based off of what we have as a, as a watermark. We would prefer to just hold the cash as a, you know, as a seam of opportunity.
So you're at eighteen.
God damn, twenty's your, twenty's pretty much your ceiling.
Yeah, I mean, we've gone to that thirty-five. Yeah, we have been, we did float there back in two thousand and eight, I believe. And then in two thousand and nineteen, in two, two thousand nineteen to twenty, we're at twenty-eight percent. I think we're now at thirteen percent. I may be off by a percent or two. I'm sorry.
And did you, did you change right at the tariff time, or are you just, just?
We, we stand, yeah, we stand pat, and then, you know, as we slowly put the money to work a month or so later. And it wasn't market timing. It was just two companies that their stock price came down, they're watching it over time, and it just became much more attractive for us. Thank you, sir.
Questions?
Anything else? Like present? And we want to thank you all for the information and thank you all for for the work you've been done over the years to to keep us in good position.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else for the good of the order? Not wanting to say a motion to adjourn. And adjourned.